We are at seven o'clock and we have returned to open session. All right, so at this time, is there any public comment?
There is not.
All right. And at this time, are there any proposed changes to the agenda? Okay. And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
All right. It's hard to believe, I wanted to acknowledge tonight the Hollywood construction completion. I think we talked about it maybe very briefly last meeting, but it is fully complete, occupied, playground being used, the multipurpose room being used, although they don't socially distance in there as well for lunch, so I believe they're still eating in the gymnasium, but it's being used for music. So, I did just want to thank all of you. I know we haven't had the opportunity to have the ribbon cuttings and such that we envisioned because of COVID, but this one was a particularly long process in getting to the agreements. I also just really wanted to thank the Hollywood Citizens Association, we know they leased us the land for us to allow us to move forward with the playground, et cetera, and then thank our team that really hung in there with a challenging construction project during COVID, so it was Jim and Ramesh and our team at DLA. So, I wanted to make sure that that was clear and shared with everybody. A non-COVID piece of information to share, which is always nice. Also, just wanted to share our update on saliva screening, share those numbers with you as we've been doing every month. I will also just say that the saliva screening, you know, continues to be just a very important piece of the process. We have detected a good number of our cases through the saliva process, and again, I think it just continues to make everybody feel safer that we have this as an opportunity. I know just, I was asked today if teachers could saliva screen this week, I think as teachers are anticipating heading, you know, heading to potentially gather with families, et cetera, and even though they did not want vaccinated staff to participate as sort of a matter of regularity, fine with sort of with the increased number of cases, people heading into the holidays, et cetera. So, that's been nice as an opportunity also. And then I know there had been some discussion, I believe at our last meeting, that S.H.I.E.L.D. was going to suggest that vaccinated individuals no longer test with saliva. They've actually changed that as a piece of their guidance, so vaccinated individuals can continue to saliva screen. We're going to encourage people to continue to do it. We have found sort of unfortunately, like, at least one fully vaccinated, you know, middle school student did test positive through saliva, so it is not out of the realm of possibility for us, as we're hearing more and more about some breakthrough infections just in general, right, in our, in our country. So, so, so again, we'll continue with that. I also do know that S.H.I.E.L.D. did post it, and I believe we have it up on our website in Principal Senate Home, they're doing some testing over the holiday break for people that are interested. I talked to S.H.I.E.L.D. today, and they said, "I think Lockport is the nearest place for you to go." I said, "Well, Lockport wouldn't be near for us." But anyway, if people are interested, that would be an option, but I think, again, I would encourage people to go and look at what the test sites are. I'm not sure that they're terribly convenient for people in the District 96 community.
Can I have a really quick question?
Sure.
So, you had mentioned allowing teachers to test prior to the holidays. If we're now allowing students who are vaccinated to test, would it be possible to get teachers back into the, you know, if they want the testing? I mean, with, with the number of breakthrough cases, most of them are vaccinated, however, a lot of our children are too, and we're still testing them. Just an idea, I don't know if that adds a layer of like, safety for our teachers, or...
Yeah, it's a great question, and I think we, what we were told is teachers who were particularly nervous, concerned, worried about a possible exposure could always do it, and so, as consenting adults, and I do know some teachers have participated sort of here and there, what they didn't accept from us was at the beginning of the year, I think we had about 80 teachers that had right away said we'd like to opt in and do it. So, I think maybe, you know, Lynda, it's a good question, I can certainly go back and ask S.H.I.E.L.D. and ask our, you know, and if the answer is yes, ask our staff if they'd like to be able to do that. I also know we've made like the binex testing available to our staff members, we have a supply of that that's been provided to us, so, again, whatever we can do to keep people feeling, you know, safe, healthy, teachers, everybody is, you know, also just monitoring for symptoms, like, you know, like everybody, so...
So, speaking of binex, I do have a question regarding that. What, what happens if the binex comes back positive? Do they again go get a PCR and the PCR comes back negative, what, I guess, does that hold? Which, what holds, I guess?
So, so, the PCR ranks over a binex. We are still going to isolate somebody with a positive binex test. I will say that I have yet to learn of a negative binex, I'm sorry, a positive binex that was then later a negative PCR. If anything, they say it's the opposite, right, that it may fail to detect, that it's not quite as accurate as PCR and the saliva testing. So, we haven't, we haven't encountered that question, but it's a good one, and I usually leave that to our nurses to decipher directly with a public health official, is how we've handled those, those harder to interpret situations.
Since we are now encouraging more people who were fully vaccinated to be taking the test, are there any kind of permission slip changes or documentation changes in those lines that we need to push out to students or staff?
I was worried there would, would be. In a recent parent communication, I reshared the link to the opt-out form, but because we went with the opt-out, it would really be that somebody may choose to opt out because now they're vaccinated. On the other hand, I think this has become fairly routine for our, for our students, and so, we have not noticed a recent decline in that, and hopefully will continue.
I thought I was misreading, actually, the landmark about the increased number of COVID cases in the area, in the districts, and many of those, you know, I believe coming after the Thanksgiving break, and some as well identified within our district. Is there any talk of, or is it even possible to sort of double test the week that we, people return from winter break? I understand the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing might be, like, there might not be the bandwidth capacity, but is there any opportunity or potential for that? Increased testing upon returning from a prolonged break where there may have been travel, family gathering?
So, certainly ask him, I think you're right, that S.H.I.E.L.D. has a certain bandwidth. What they have been doing is our nurses have requested extra supplies, so, for those of you that have been following the communications, we had what's considered an outbreak in a class here at Ames, and interestingly, the public health guidance was keep the class open and test frequently, and so, those children have been tested. It's been not, not quite daily, but it's been several times. So, so we now, I think, again, just, the process does evolve, right? And so, this idea of having the extra supplies, our custodian drove to the lab and dairy, you know, and we just were able to kind of take care of some things ourselves, so, I think that was a good scenario for us to go through and to learn from that. So, so the idea is yes, but it wouldn't be necessarily everybody. I could certainly ask that question, I just don't know how, what, what S.H.I.E.L.D.'s response would be to that. But certainly, if we had a class where we were more suspect or concerned, we do know that we can do extra testing there.
Yeah, Martha, I have a follow-up with Stephanie's. Is, do we have a limiting factor of the number of tests available, or is it the ability to process the tests for S.H.I.E.L.D.? Did they answer that?
It's really the manpower, so they come and they actually run the, the testing day at whichever school, and actually, as you know, we transitioned, we had Visit Healthcare, we were going to get a different healthcare organization, we actually got the S.H.I.E.L.D. field operation team, so S.H.I.E.L.D. is doing it themselves directly in our schools. I think that is their intended long, you know, essentially long-range plan for this school year. So, you definitely get the sense there's a manpower issue sort of at the center of all this. So, there's the supplies, we can keep looking at that. I do encourage our families, you know, again, any symptomatic child should not be coming back to school on January 3rd, if families feel they are in a situation where they may have been exposed, please hold your child out longer, get tested. We encourage families to pursue that also, but we do have, you know, certainly, again, somebody that's a little nervous, again, I think if you're nervous, I'd say go get tested, you know, before you come back to school would be my advice, but I can certainly look at, could S.H.I.E.L.D. do like a twice a week that first week back or something? That, that's what you're alluding to, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I might be alone in that sentiment or...
Yeah.
If it's possible.
Sure.
I just think they're going to say that.
Yeah, probably.
Actually, I might, might say maybe the second week back versus the first week back.
You want to go five to eight days after, it's hard to know when.
Depends on when you actually got it.
Right.
Yeah.
That's true.
If you talk about the beginning of break or the end of break.
And I think people, I sent out a communication today that I love our nurses, they do an outstanding job, they spend a lot of evenings and a lot of weekends talking to families and sending out the necessary communications. We all really want our nurses to take a break during the winter holiday, so our nurses will not be available to District 96 families, so families are encouraged to go and get tested through the many, you know, different testing facilities that are out there, but we are putting out a, you know, we put out a survey form, so we would like families to report to us if there is a COVID case that occurred during break so that we can manage the quarantine isolation period that may, you know, extend January 3rd or beyond. So, it's an honor system, but I think it's an important step, and I would encourage families to please, please let us know. Families have been good about letting us know all along, so I anticipate that that'll be a good tool for us.
Martha, there's been some commentary in the community about kind of COVID fatigue, and have you seen any significant number of people who have tested positive at some point or another and opt out of testing after that? Just the frustration of being disrupted yet again.
Yeah. We've had some families, every now and then, like, so David, to your question about a positive, a false positive, a false negative, and there've been, there's sometimes, well, then that'll create a little ripple of frustration, like, maybe I don't want to test because these test results are, the district takes them very seriously. It's hard to say if I've noticed it at a, a larger scale. I mean, I think people are still being very compliant with the masks, people are still participating in the saliva screening, families are not happy but understanding when their children have to go on, you know, remote learning during a period of isolation or quarantine. So, yeah, I mean, unfortunately, we're still here, right? So, I mean, fortunately, we're all still here. But unfortunately, COVID is still with us, so...
We knew what you meant.
Yes, right, right. I better be clear about that, so, anyway. I'll move on, unless there's other questions about the saliva test.
I only have a 10-second comment that...
Sure.
I'm very grateful to the district, the nurses, Kathy and the other district office staff that came to administer those vaccinations to the young ones, including my daughter, I really am so thankful. I hope that others go out and get their child vaccinated, because I know, you know, nationally, it's not a huge percentage yet, and so, I'm hoping that will help everybody stay in the classroom, so, but I wanted to say thank you. The nurses, they were here, and so, we're, office staff, those of you that didn't have their child, I mean, it was really well-run, and just I appreciate the extra time, they stayed late, and thank you.
Completely, thank you, Sherri, for bringing that up. Kathy Prina was a big piece of that, along with Donna McLaughlin and Nancy Schuderman and Linda Roberto from our office, and then our team of nurses, and they did a great job, so...
Indeed, they did.
Yeah. Our Illinois State Report Card was released. As you know, we, we heard about student academic achievement, looking at our NWA MAP scores. This relates to the Illinois Assessment for Readiness. It was kind of a, it's often a much anticipated release of the state report card, this one came with a little less fanfare because all the comparative data is not available to us yet, but I did want to share that that's been updated on our website and that was released. Any questions about that? We can dig in, continue to dig in, obviously, we talked about student achievement, but just wanted, that's really just a reminder about the state report card. Also wanted to share, I'm not ready to dig in, we haven't had time to analyze it, but we've had, as of today, 779 responses to the community survey about full-day kindergarten. Angela shared with me that of those 416 also use the open-ended response and have comments to share, so, when it comes time to kind of dig into that and...
Yep.
That was anticipated.
Sort of assess our findings. I think...
Short comments?
No.
I haven't seen any, I just asked Angela for the number of responses. 779 responses in our community is huge. I think when we did our...
Right.
...facility survey back a number of years ago, just about like, did the facilities meet your students' needs, and kind of, it was kind of perspectives and impressions, I think we had 300-some-odd, and we were really impressed by that, so, this is a very large number. Also, just got great feedback from both Brookfield and Riverside Villages, they were happy to put it out. I know I've seen it out on social media, it's out on Twitter, by some of our principals have put it out there, so, it's, it's out there in a variety of ways, and I think that's certainly added to the, the level of response that we're receiving. And then I just wanted to say, even though it's 60 degrees on December 15th, I do want to say happy holidays to everybody. It is hard to believe that two more days, as our middle school principal says, two more sleeps to the kids until they have their winter break, and that's always exciting, and I, I think it's actually coming at a good time also with COVID and everything else. I think it's good that we have a little pause in our, all of the social interactions going on here in school and, and give everybody a break, so, anyway, happy holidays to everybody.
Happy holidays, indeed. Don't worry, the snow's coming.
Yeah, I appreciate your email today, but you know, it's 60 degrees.
You never know.
I will say, that made people nervous, that apparently chargers started going home, and some Zoom reminders were sent out, and someone said, "Are you getting ready to go remote because of COVID?" I said, "No, you know what, we've been talking about e-learning in the school district." I think teachers were making sure kids were ready. We did have one winter holiday, I forget what year that was, big snowstorm right on the...
We did.
Day back, so, you never know.
Two weeks, yeah, you never know.
Thank you, Martha. Happy holidays, indeed. All right, so that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion that the Board of Education appro, wait, no, I'm doing this wrong, I'm sorry. So, can the Board Secretary read the tonight's consent agenda?
Sir, it's a fairly short one today. Today's consent, tonight's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes from the November 3rd, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting, and November 17th, 2021, regular business meeting, no closed session, session meeting minutes from either of those, personnel report as presented, payables pre-list as of November 30th, 2021, and payables pre-list as of December 15th, 2021, and that is it.
All right. Is there a motion that the Board approve tonight's consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
All right, we, anything to be taken off, or, I know we had that issue last time?
No.
No? All right, are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All right, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Murphy?
Hi.
Mr. Marple?
Hi.
Mr. Barsadi?
Hi.
Mr. Muirhead?
Hi.
Ms. Gunn?
Hi.
Ms. Kleiber?
Hi.
Mr. Hunt? Hi. All right, next is the Riverside Education Council.
I wonder if there's any ready here for that?
Okay. Board member comments. I will reiterate Sherri's, you know, her family's participation in the vaccination clinics. My, my, my family participated as well, and it definitely was a great thing, and I want to pass along my thanks to the district staff and the nurses who, who participated. Definitely, I know that the Life Park nurse was definitely a great help with my son. All right, anything else? Then that brings us to committee reports, and first is the Education Committee.
You know, we don't have too much, or it's very similar to last time, the kindergarten survey has gone out, we'll be waiting for results, and it's really just the, Angela and the administrators and teachers are all in cruise mode and in teaching mode, and so, we'll just be talking about those other kindergarten issues after the new year and continuing with the strategic plan as we go down the list, so I think that was it. And Lynda, I don't know...
Yeah, no, I, you summed it up perfectly.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Then that brings us to the Personnel Committee.
Just one thing for tonight, Martha and I are actually meeting tomorrow, the last couple of weeks have been kind of busy for both of us, we didn't get to meet before tonight, but by February Cal, we'd probably have some more stuff to talk about. But Dan and I did meet with Martha to talk about superintendent evaluation process and just like, kind of just looking at how the contract versus the strategic plan versus, like, what we've been talking about, goals, making sure those all align, and just making sure everything is, has good vertical alignment, so everybody's moving in the right direction, and really just around our process of completing that evaluation, because we always kind of talk about it, we sort of change it every year, and we always know when it's coming and when it's due, and we always scramble kind of at the last minute, so, led us into a couple other things, because there's just a lot of things that tie into it, but we talked a little bit about the board self-assessment, and I think it sounds like we've got a date already for next August that hopefully works for everybody, but we reached out to IASB just to get some feedback around that, and then just really kind of talking about what does that calendar look like, and that's where that kind of bled in, so, that and the superintendent evaluation are kind of like our two main actions that we have to drive ourself, and so, just kind of talking through that calendar of, like, what are those dates that we need to have these things done, and the superintendent evaluation being one of those, so, just kind of having Dan suggest like a calendar reminder so that we all know, you know, two months from now, we need to have this written, and then like, have a delivery schedule, and have, you know, all the content that goes in it, and our discussions and, and feedback, and what that looks like and everything, so, we scratched out a, a couple notes around that, and we'll kind of put that together a little bit more cohesively and present some more stuff in the future, but just kind of wanted to give you guys a insight into what we were thinking about, just trying to evolve that process and, and make it a little bit more consistent and easy to navigate year over year.
Yeah, thank you for doing that, because it's probably makes trouble with lift for years, so I would be appreciative of that. I want to make that process as productive as it should be, so...
Just about every board struggles with it in one way or another, but, you know, the more predictable we can make it, the more on a continuous, you know, calendar, having those dates, and again, it's amazing, we have, we have Outlook, we get emails, but I don't think I have anything, anything set up in my Outlook calendar, my board Outlook calendar, so, yeah, if we can throw those notices out there, that, that might give people a little bit of a reminder, because, again, I, I think when, when I get a note that I have an email from the board off, from my board account on my phone, then I can pay attention to it. If it was just to rely on, you know, the iPad, I'd only know every two weeks.
Right. I have everything on my phone, man.
Right.
And we are holding August 3rd, it's actually the August, really the whole date, that would be the date that we're holding for the self-assessment.
Just the evening that we did water, water test, trying to...
Yeah.
Actually, wait, me, one more comment, that just triggered my thought on that, was part of the reason we got into that schedule was talking about, like, so, the district's goals are essentially Martha's goal, like, that's what we're evaluating for, right? So, we were talking about the, these other components in relation to that as like, how do we more effectively track the, like, the big things that are being done, so that when we go to do that evaluation, we all have the same information, it's easy to find. I know for myself, I go and I try to peck around and, you know, find my own notes, and where were these documents in board book and all that, that's, you just, your board book comment reminded me of that, and so, as we've been going through the cows, and we set those agendas to say, you know, tonight we're going to talk about goal one and goal two, tomorrow, you know, next month, goal three, so like, having that consistent process, and then creating, you know, a couple just brainstorming ideas of like, how do we make the big things more accessible, like, what dates did we actually talk about things so that you can more easily find the documents, and so, just procedural stuff that we'll get a little bit better at over the next couple of weeks, but probably, I don't know, for me, it feels a little weird in December 15th, talking about superintendent valuation, but it's really only like two, three months away, because it always happens before the end of the year and...
Right.
...all that kind of stuff, so, just trying to stay ahead of it so that we don't find ourselves like scrambling too much, hopefully this year, and getting that process completed. So, thank you for that, that triggered my, my mind, I know I was forgetting something, so...
Yes, there definitely were two aspects of the evaluation process, but then also goal-setting for the next one, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good to bring out both, both aspects of that.
And that's all.
All right. Thanks, Wes. Then next up is the Facilities Committee.
Nothing specific to report today, other than we'll be meeting on January 10th to, with Facilities Advisory, and we'll be continuing our discussions regarding Life and Central.
All right. Then the Finance Committee.
Nothing to really report, but I did meet with Jim this past. We, we talked about going over some scenarios based on the discussion we had surrounding full-day kindergarten, sort of costs, and, so, I've asked him to take a look at sort of the broader picture, other financials, specifically as it relates to the reserve balance, which I know there's been a lot of discussion about, so, he's going to be running some scenarios such as like full-day kindergarten, Central Hauser Campus, now granted, we don't have quotes for that, but we, we have estimates, and so, we can throw in numbers based on that. So, I guess what I'm asking here is if anyone has any specific scenarios that we might not have come up with, or if there's any scenarios you'd like to run, if you could just shoot me an email, what have you, let me know, give me a call, so that we can, so when we come back with the, with the analysis, we can at least look at it from like a, a broader perspective, and have a like more fruitful discussion.
I know the two that you just mentioned were top on my list.
Yeah.
Those two.
Most definitely.
Full-day kindergarten with construction.
Yeah, with construction.
Right.
Right, with and without construction, so...
Those are the two for me.
Right. If we didn't do anything, I mean, so, trying to look at all the scenarios that we have, the information, so if there's something that comes up, please let me know.
Are those individualized weekends things that we were talking about, are those big-ticket items, or is that really, like, doing the roof and then doing mechanical and then doing, are those individual services of a high-dollar amount?
No, those were not high-dollar. Honestly, the roof was very, very reasonable, I can't remember exactly what they priced out at per building, but I suppose...
Nothing that would like really screw up a, a projection or anything like that?
No, no, not at all. Now, with that caveat, the results of such...
Correct.
...could have some big impacts, but, in my mind right now, is just that I know, because we will be looking at Life a little bit harder with the expectation, well, expectation is the wrong word, but the possibility that we're going to be doing something more significant there, that, that can push things closer in time than...
Yeah, okay. That was just the first thing that popped into my head, so I just, I wasn't sure how much those evaluations cost, though, to your point, the result could be very expensive, but...
That's a good, good point to bring up. All right. Anything else for Finance Committee?
Nope, that's it.
Right. Which brings us to Policy Committee.
All right, well, lucky me, I have learned that Press Issue 108 is the largest issue ever, at 603 pages.
How many pages?
603, so I feel very fortunate to be working on this Press Plus issue.
You know, I'm, I'm glad you broke my record, because I thought, I thought, I was told I had the last record, so...
I mean, you know, it was like a trophy.
She broke that record, didn't she?
I'm glad it's a record.
Oh, that's true, yeah, I'm sorry, that was, a big misspeak on my part.
But a number of, you know, factors affected that, primarily, of course, in 2020, not a lot of pieces of legislation were passed because of COVID. Sometimes the updates are not insignificant, but perhaps footnotes and, and, you know, not particularly pertinent to the day-to-day work. There's some pretty substantive and meaty changes coming up, so, Martha and I are actually also meeting tomorrow. I did attend the virtual training with Kathy to hear from like Press Plus updates, as well as just kind of how breaking it all down. So, yeah, some really big pieces of, of legislation that affect overall, like, potential curriculum and sex education, and the passage of, you know, Aaron's Law, there's, you know, factors affecting student attendance, holidays, Open Meetings Act, miscellaneous others, so, there's a whole host of things in there, so we will be meeting to discuss the best way to organize this, to bring it to the board in a way that's very digestible, because there will be some, I think, kind of big decisions that, that need to be made around some of the updates. Yeah, that's really...
Stephanie, the 600 pages is still a lot, even considering the subject matter you already mentioned. Are there some appendices or exhibits that are buried in that document that make it quite so...
There were some, right, this time around? Yeah.
Okay. That becomes more understandable.
There were some this time around, but I think overall, like, when I then tuned into the Press Plus, they said, like, the customizing piece, that there could be like a total of like 67 policies that need to potentially be updated, so it is a lot of different individualized. I don't know, Martha, if you had anything else on it?
I would just reiterate kind of the same, that even though some of the changes don't look significant, they are some of our most significant policies that I think are probably the ones that are really at the core of how we function, both for board administration and students. So, they picked a significant grouping, I think it does relate to the legislation that has required some of the changes, yeah.
Sure. There's probably a lot of five-year renewals as part of that as well, I'm guessing.
Some, yeah.
Yeah, there was some, one new, some five-year, and various updates.
Lot of footnotes.
The longest footnote ever, footnote 34 of the 660 suite, also, I learned. Now, the largest footnote in the entire policy reference manual, so, I just, yeah.
Sounds like you're being pretty thorough with that, Stephanie.
To be one of those lawyers would have fun. Thanks.
What was the diagram on page 237?
Not a photographic memory, but it's been.
Yeah, you're assuming, I know.
Just own it. Yeah, just say it very matter-of-fact.
No, no, this could call you out.
And everybody would believe me. Yeah. So again, look, you know, we'll bring that in February.
Definitely.
So maybe begin perusing it now rather than later.
All right.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Thanks so much for your diligence on that. All right. I have nothing under whole business tonight, but we do have a new business discussion. Let's see, the IGA Brookfield Shared Facilities Agreement.
So happy to, so as you recall, we had met with Tim Wyberg, the village manager from Brookfield. There'd been a bit of a ongoing conversation about cost sharing with crossing guards and the board asked if there was something else that we might be able to consider in place of a shared payment for crossing guards. He had mentioned that he had a similar arrangement, I believe, with District 95. So we did, Jim Fitton and I joined them for a meeting and there is some real interest in using Hollywood School potentially for some summer programming, day camp type programming, also the possibility of not childcare, but some of their sort of programs that are offered to students, families in, in the after-school hours, maybe during the regular school year. So that seemed like a very valid thing for us to do as, as two partners, governmental partners, to share Hollywood School. I know with summer school, we, we look to do summer school at Central Hauser because we also do some transition activities with children, learning their way around Hauser and that kind of thing. That's always a really valuable activity. But when Central and Hauser has been off limits because of construction, we've done it over at Ames. So I do not anticipate that we, that we would have a need to use Hollywood School for our own summer school programming. So I really do think it becomes available, pretty easily available to the Village of Brookfield to use for their parks and recreation program. So the information's all there for you to take a look at. And again, this isn't a voting item. It's really just an initial consideration. If there's particular feedback that you'd want me to take back to the Brookfield Village, I'd be happy to do that.
It sounds like a good deal to me. Definitely good for, for families of that school in the, in the district as well. Now, I do wonder, is, is there anything to be said for wear and tear, or are we putting facilities at risk, or would we incur damages over time that might, you know, eat into the value of this agreement?
We'd probably want to look at things like, I know the carrying a certain level of insurance and if there was actual damage. I know that even was reflected in the agreement. If you recall, we have a, like a snow removal agreement if we're parked on the street and there were things like if you damaged the curb and some other pieces. So.
There's, there's liability in that in here, talking about damage to the property. I guess I did have one question. It states in, or section two, under B in section two, I'm sorry, not two, in the first section with under section E, it says that the programs will be available to families residing out of the school district's boundaries, which they already do that. I mean, there's additional costs. I guess my question is for Riverside residents, I mean, is the cost going to be, or is it going to be the same cost? Are they going to be saying like if the program costs so X for Brookfield residents, is it going to be the same for Riverside residents? I mean, I think if we're going to be giving the property or entering this agreement, the cost should be the same because it is taxpayers' dollars.
Right.
But like you have to go back and look and see what the Village Riverside program looks like as well.
I believe the Village of Riverside offers us, offers Brookfield residents or North Riverside residents who, who take advantage of the before and after care the same price.
Right. But I guess the thing is, this is not, to your point, Joel, we're giving them something. Riverside doesn't use our space except for like the before and after care. And so I'm just saying, for me, this has to be equitable for everyone. So.
They sort of like use our space more than us to park and recreation programs.
It's, it's an interesting question to ask, definitely.
I guess I also have, I have overall concerns about this agreement. Specifically, I know Tim Wyberg came here to us and said that like, want to split the cost down to about $7,200 for us. I guess I, I looked up sort of what the cost is for crossing guard and according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the average hourly cost for a crossing guard is $16.45 an hour. Based on how many hours we're going to be using them, it comes to about 6,400, just a little over $6,400 a year. Now, even if you added benefits on of like, say 30%, that still comes to less, I mean, it still comes to less than the $14,000 Brookfield says these crossing guards cost.
Wasn't it a maximum, not to exceed?
Yeah.
No, I thought it was.
Except not to exceed during, you know. I don't think it was a guaranteed amount of them.
I thought it was, I thought it was, but regardless, he came to us with $14,000. Okay? And so I guess I just would like to know where they came up with that number. Okay? Because like I said, even if you, even if you had a 30% benefits, which is pretty generous, it still comes to about 8,300, far less than 14,000.
Yeah, it just says the school district's total payment obligation to the line exceeds $7,200 in any year of this agreement.
Right. But I guess the thing is.
So you're just asking where the number came from?
Where's the number coming from? Right.
Kind of like imposing judgment that they did something mischievous.
I'm not, I wasn't judging. I'm just saying, and I guess sort of, I guess that's like trust but verify. I mean, I trust that these numbers are accurate, but like, how, how did they come up with it?
It could be what they do with the other districts that they're involved with. Maybe it's a number that they, I don't know, that they currently have incurred, who knows?
Right. And so.
What they're currently paying.
I think we would need to also compare to what the Village of Riverside charges for the same service because I would expect that rather than, I mean, BLS is good numbers, but they're averages. So I think the real number would be something similar to what the village, what Riverside.
I mean, the low end, the lowest 10% was $10 an hour. The highest 10% was almost $25 an hour. So I mean, we have to do, I'm just saying.
I mean, I'm certain these costs are part of their budget, right? I mean, they already have crossing.
Right, no. And I'm sure.
So certainly can easily give us that information.
Right.
I'm sure it comes from.
I think so, yeah. But Jim, am I, am I recalling correctly, did you go over these with Tim before the initial proposal? I seem to recall that.
Yeah, I, I was just looking for that email, but I think it was $7,200 that, the 14,000 if we're splitting, and our share in the initial draft would have been $7,200. And I know that's less than a crossing guard cost with Riverside. So Brookfield numbers seemed reasonable at the time. They were lower, so I didn't really question them.
But there was a certain level of documentation to them, or was it just essentially numbers that were given to us from, from Brookfield?
They had provided us with some breakdowns of how many guards were stationed and.
Right, right.
It was a number of guards, the number of days. I think they pay a minimum of four hours instead of maybe three hours at Riverside, but the rate was so much lower that the four hours cost less than the three. I would say I can find the rate. I don't know if I was given that much detail. Once I saw that it was less than any other guards were paying for, I, I didn't dig any further. I didn't want to find a mistake that went against us.
I'm sure they can give that information. Yeah, it says the villages to provide all of these documents and how they payroll and immoruses and all of these things. I'm sure it'll be documented after the fact as well.
Well, definitely, these are some things we can look forward in follow-up that.
So in my understanding correctly, that, and maybe I'm not, that for this year, like the idea of using facilities would be next, like moving forward, but we are agreeing to pay for this fiscal year? Is, is that what these?
So we're, we're not paying for crossing, the Brookfield crossing guards currently at all.
Okay.
Right, Jim? So, yeah.
Cause there's two agreements.
Because we haven't, we hadn't.
The old agreement is really just there, the crossing guard agreement is there just as a reference point. So sorry to create confusion.
I thought, I thought it was looking like that's, that this fiscal year or this school year, we are doing that. But that was just a, okay.
Sorry. Yeah, I put that there. That's the one that they had presented. We really said that wasn't what the board was interested in approving. So we asked to come up with an altogether different agreement, which is the agreement for the use of facilities.
Right.
No, and then no, no more discussion about shared crossing guard costs. This would essentially replace that. So again, I put that there as a reference. I could see how that was confusing. So.
So we are not approving anything, moving forward, we're looking to approve a shared facilities agreement in lieu of crossing guard fees.
Exactly, yes.
So there's no money being.
Yeah, makes sense from what we discussed.
Yeah, no, sure.
I remember he was saying all go to, all go to the board.
Right. But then I saw the other agreement, which said for just this fiscal year. So I was like, oh, maybe we're also approving for this.
No, that's a good question. Yeah.
It's good to get that clarified, definitely.
Yes, thank you.
In general, Martha, I have to say, we support this. This is kind of shared services that we should always be trying to leverage. The village has the ability to give us, provide, whatever term you want to use, trained crossing guards who have, you know, police supervision, public safety, and we have the ability to provide a facility. And while Dan's concerns about maintenance or wear and tear are valid, there's, there's no reason to believe that the use that the village is suggesting is anything that is abnormal or out of the ordinary.
I think as a public body, taxpayers do have the right to use these facilities. They're certainly paid for by the taxpayers. And I, I think it's a absolutely normal and reasonable practice for them to be using our space. So, and a historic one as well. So.
I do wonder to David's point though, if, let's say it isn't like a summer camp program or, you know, a park district class that they're offering in one of our facilities, specifically perhaps at, you know, wherever Hollywood, that the, that the fees for any child that resides in the district be the same, as opposed to like, like my children are enrolled in the Brookfield Parks and Rec Summer Camp, which takes place at the village hall, and there is a resident and a non-resident fee. That to me wouldn't necessarily make sense because it's off-site, it's at their own facility. But whatever program is being offered within our buildings, those classes should be offered at the same cost to residents or non-residents of the district. And again, I don't know what they're planning to offer. I imagine for summer camp, it might be like their teen camp or something that's a little smaller than their full out, you know, summer camp programming. But yeah, that would be something I'd be curious about as well.
I think that makes sense and I'll pass that along. So when we're talking about possible revisions, that seems to be the one that the costs are, cost for any District 96 student would be the same.
When offered in our.
When offered in that Hollywood school.
Right.
No, that's great. So just to make sure I'm fully clear, so that like we don't come back next time with another question, it's just that the $7,200 is not even mentioned in the one that we're looking to approve.
No, it's not.
So that.
It's, it's not, but I mean, that was the number that was thrown out. I mean, we've had a struggle with Brookfield in the past, okay? Especially surrounding the whole, whole Hollywood. And so I, I, I'm going into this trusting, but I also want to verify.
But I think that $7,200 number is moot now because we're not even discussing that transaction.
Yeah, that's definitely a good point.
All right.
Right? Like that's not even like.
Yeah, it's in exchange for the use of our.
It's off the table.
We're not looking to like.
They are assigning for those employees.
But I guess the thing is, everything has a value. And so the way I'm, I'm looking at this is we're getting, we're giving, we're essentially giving out 300, we're getting in 390 hours of staff time essentially in crossing guards. I did the math here. But we're giving out 640 hours of facility time, which includes at least three rooms, the gymnasium, a classroom, and I forget there was another room in there. But there's three rooms. So to me, this seems to be much more advantageous to the Village of Brookfield. Even if we just take out the dollar now, we're looking at like.
Well, I would, I would, I would look at an aspect though, as well, that the community gets enhanced by having these additional programs.
I, I, that's what I look at it more about, the value of community partnership.
Yes.
Yes.
They're both services of community wants and we're be, we're able to come together and provide that.
And I'll, I'll agree with you in that, assuming that the costs are the same for district, for district students, district families.
Right. And Martha's going to have to check in on that. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure because I was confused with the two different agreements, that the, the one we are looking to approve moving forward is not have a dollar amount assigned to crossing guards. It's just talking about shared use of facilities. We, you can use our facilities and you, you will provide, the village will provide crossing guards.
Right. And I'm going to suggest we put the old draft IGA into the board agenda just as a point of reference for all of you. So.
Okay. Cause I just noticed it was added.
Yeah.
And that's what confused me because I thought, oh, yeah. Okay.
I figured someone would say, what was the cost in the IGA, the crossing guard IGA?
And I guess, I just had one other question and I don't know, Wes, I don't know if you have any, but I know it says there's a clause in here under section two, means it states that we could sue if the village doesn't adhere to its, to its obligations, specifically in regards to payments of damages or what have you, if they damage the property. And we have the right to sue. I guess to collect monies lost, I guess my question is tying anything up in litigation is painful. I mean, it just sort of drags things out. I guess, is there any way that we could possibly change that, that, you know, you break something, you pay for it. There's no, you don't, we don't, we don't go to court to try to get you to enforce it. You pay it, you pay it to us.
I have a feeling our attorneys would not recommend that.
It already essentially says that in the maintenance of property section, which says the village agrees to be responsible for any and all damages related to or arising out of the village's use. So.
But it says, but it says down here, it says in section B, it says, "In the event that the village fails or refuses to comply with this or any provision of this agreement, the stewardess at its sole discretion may proceed to file suit against the village to comply."
Right.
I think.
I think that's, that's a wise protection for us.
I agree with you.
It's a protection clause, but I think this is, it's pretty much understood that you will be reasonable and you will, you will fix what you break.
Yeah, I wouldn't anticipate any issues with that.
I would say it doesn't matter what you put in here.
All right.
If I don't want to do it, I don't admit it. And then breach of contract and suing.
All right.
Exactly. To remove, to remove litigation, it's just dumb on our part. It's not done.
I'm not saying remove, I'm just saying.
The contract will not force somebody to do something they don't want to do. Now there might be legal and financial ramifications to it, but they don't want to do it. They're just not going to do it. So you can change the words all you want, but the contract just says.
Then maybe, maybe we could change the words to say that, you know, if they don't comply with this, there's a penalty on top of litigation.
Well, and it's.
Well, can I just interject to you that we did not have our attorney review it because this is a whole new concept, this idea of shared facilities. So if the concept sort of has value, and it sounds like it does, then we would have an additional legal review done.
So we're still going to do that?
Yeah.
I think the maintenance of property paragraph is sufficient for our purposes. And anything beyond that ends up seeming rather punitive. I mean, the.
I think that's a.
The paragraph.
Yeah, I think we, I think getting an attorney's review of it to make sure we're good with it is there. But I, I feel like the maintenance of property and the insurance clause should go together because if they're negligent in damaging the property, then the insurance should kick in theoretically. All depends on the situation. And I'm pretty sure Brookfield maintains their insurance. So I'm generally comfortable with that. But I think to your point about the cost though, I hear what you're saying, Dave, like everything has a cost. It's whether you see it or not, it's tangible or not, that's a whole different thing. I think the only cost that really go into it for us, I think, is the cost of having the building, like so heat, air, lights, water, like utilities, because we're not staffing.
Custodial and custodial.
Okay. So that was going to be another question is who's cleaning? Because with the HCA, we had a big thing about your cleaning, we're cleaning.
It talks about a custodian.
We will supply custodial supports for any kind of summer programs and things like that.
I think that's implied in there right now.
Okay. So it'd be like utilities and the custodian is really our cost that go into it.
And the cost of the staff who are organizing on our end to coordinate that, principals and things. But, you know, I'm sure that they can handle it. And I think, you know, again, this is about community partnerships. And I think we need to really go in with that mindset to be successful.
Right. I, I honestly, this is a, this, this comes out of a situation that we entered into it, I honestly didn't feel the greatest about. But it seems like this is a way to make it a win-win in that, yeah. Both, both sides, you know, we get to continue use of crossing guards, Brookfield gets to use it for their programs, the community gets to benefit from those programs. And it's, it's a lot better solution in my mind than either we pay them or we don't and they feel bad about it.
I agree.
I'm, I'm very grateful that that was a person.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I just say, if, I didn't realize, I thought our attorneys looked at this and this was. And I, I just say, I didn't realize, I thought our attorneys looked at this and this is, so, yeah. Let's have our attorneys look at it, get their feedback.
Cause we weren't sure if a shared facilities felt like a sort of adequate substitute for the crossing guard. So given that it sounds like it does, then we'll go and review some of the finer points.
Before you spell the attorneys?
Right, right.
All right. Well, so were you looking for a specific recommendation from the board then on this, or do you have it at this point?
Well, I'm just sort of, again, sort of gauging the consensus that it sounds like there's value in this idea of a community partnership of shared facilities in lieu of crossing guard payments specifically. There's some details here that would require a finer look before we would approve it. So I bring it back to January, I mean, I'll talk to the Village of Brookfield, bring it back to January board meeting. This is one where you may still want to have another look because you haven't looked at the final legal document. So if we, you know, again, the goal is to approve this in time for them to do summer programming. Now, I know that also means getting their catalog out and that sort of thing, so it's not summer, but it'd probably be like February would be fair, I think.
Right, to advertise.
But it's a four or five-page agreement, I can count, and it shouldn't be that hard for our attorneys to look at that in light of the fact that they've looked at a number of agreements in the past.
This is not an uncommon thing, at least at schools where I have worked, there have always been relationships with community partnerships, people coming in to hold classes. Like, it seems very normal to me, I'm not a hundred years' experience, but I'm sure the attorneys have seen this many times, so.
So seven churches.
It doesn't feel that complex.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not press plus.
Right.
You got that right.
Maybe try to fill it with some.
You can fill it with some.
All right, anything else on the agreement? All right. And that brings us back to public comment. No additional public comment, okay? And for future meeting dates, the January fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting has been canceled. That was the committee of the whole meeting, that is now canceled. That brings us then for our first meeting of twenty twenty-two will be January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two is a regular business meeting. Seven PM in the multipurpose room at Ames Elementary. The board will enter into closed session at six fifteen PM if necessary, and return to open session at seven PM. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.